All right, what call do we need to order this evening? Let's start with the roll call. Please. Mayor Dexter, here. Deputy Mayor Carr.
Here.
Councilmember French.
Here.
Councilmember McCon.
Here.
Councilmember Meyer.
Present.
Councilmember Sherman Warren.
Sherry Kid.
Councilmember Stuggs, here. Manager West.
Present.
Attorney Lord.
Here.
All right, if we could stand for the pledge of allegiance, please. Thank you. All right, so we will start with public comment. And our first speaker signed up tonight is Lisa Huff. And I just want to remind everyone that you get three minutes. And you just need to state if you are a resident of the city of Port Angeles or not. Lisa is outside, so let's go to Ed Chad and then we'll...
Good evening, I'm Ed Chad. I live in Port Angeles. Just a brief comment, somewhat of a progress report on the Climate Action Plan. You probably have heard that there've been a couple of very well-attended meetings that the Planning Commission Subcommittee has had. I'm not officially, obviously talking to you about that. But I do want to reiterate something that I talked about earlier, which is that the Planning Commission Subcommittee is about to engage a bunch of volunteers in a very involved inventory process, trying to gauge the city's carbon footprint. And it's going to take a lot of work over many months. Jefferson County is just about finished up with an inventory that they've been doing. And on behalf of Olympic Climate Action, which is, I'm the chair, so that's a local climate action group, I just want to say again that if you're going to engage a bunch of volunteers in doing that much work, we should try to get as much out of that effort as possible. And to do that, it doesn't take a lot of extra effort when you're gathering that information, to gather the information not only at the city level, but at the county level. And so, again, I'm going to urge the city to reach out. And we did have a conversation about this at that last Subcommittee meeting. Staff is planning to reach out to staff at the county, but it might require government-to-government communication. And in that sense, I'm just giving you a heads-up that that might be a step that you'll need to take. It's just to reach out to the county and ask, are you ready to partner? At least on this aspect of just gauging what our greenhouse gas impact is. As you know, the city's draft plan already calls for that kind of cooperation. And I think there's a huge amount of strength in cooperating that way, both in terms of being able to accomplish more if we're working together. And I also really believe that our region is going to have a much better chance of attracting money, grant money, foundation money, all kinds of money, private investment, if we're working regionally together. So I just wanted to, again, give you a heads-up. And hopefully, if need be, somebody from City Council will reach out to the county as need be. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Lisa Huff.
Good evening. I'm Lisa Huff from the city of Los Angeles. And I'm here once again to ask for a day's shelter for the homeless. We now have an influenza outbreak at the shelter because of the cold and the climate. And now we're all being quarantined. I haven't got it yet, I got tested today. But we're not asking for a brand-new building. I mean, we can wander a town and find all kinds of buildings that were worked really good with a little fixing up or a little work. I'm not asking for a whole bunch. Just a place to be out of this. Thank you.
Thank you. And Sherry Kid.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. And Happy New Year to the new Council. And welcome. Is the seat comfortable, friend? I found it good, I'm glad you find it comfortable. A couple of things quickly. I want to thank Thomas Hunter and Corey Delacotte for the outstanding job they did during the major snowfall we had. I just applauded every time the snowplow came down Laurel Street. It was just wonderful. But they're out there working hard and did a good job for us. I'm hoping, Chief Smith, that the scoundrels were snowed in and I hope the fire department and the police department had fewer calls during the snowstorm. We all think we all may as well. I'm here tonight to talk about our sister city, Mutsu, because this is the 25th anniversary of the exchanges of hundreds and hundreds of our children. And actually, that has affected thousands and thousands of lives, back and forth, with Mutsu here and our children going to Japan, as they have. And many, many council members and mayors, and I myself, five years ago, attended a special, wonderful week in Mutsu. And we were treated just so fabulously. So last month, we had a delegation from Mutsu. And it was the first Tuesday in January when you were meeting. So I was invited and I exchanged gifts with the mayor of Mutsu. I found beautiful framed pictures of the area. And was given gifts for you by the mayor of Mutsu. I hope that as council members, so twice a year, they come. And we have a junior high group that comes in the spring or early part of the year and in the fall is the high school group. And I hope that we have a dinner together. So I hope you council members will make an effort to attend those dinners and get to know them. And then, a few days later, they have a goodbye farewell, a dessert reception, where the Japanese children give a one-minute speech in English and thank their host families, and it's so endearing. But that's important for you as council members, that you carry on our 25-year tradition. So thank you. So I'm here tonight to give you the gifts for you that I received at the dinner. So if I may do that.
Yes, and really quickly, before you walk away, can you state your name for the record? Sorry. You can be down the other side, isn't it?
You said Sherry Kid, yes. Okay, Sherry Kid, citizen and taxpayer of Port Angeles, Washington. Born and raised, third generation.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone else who would like to speak during public comment? Okay, we'll close that... I can play my mic on. We'll close that public comment period. And we'll just give Sherry an opportunity to come by here. Thank you so much. Thanks for coming.
Lindsay, yours is on the dice.
All right, does staff have any late items this evening?
Madam Mayor, we have no late items this evening.
Okay, any late items from council? Okay. I'd like to... Lindsay, did you have something?
Yes, I would like to ask if we could consider doing an open meeting for the Open Public Meetings Act Primer that we have a research service center doing February 12. I previously note the mayor and city manager about this. I'd like to see if you put it on the agenda to see if other council members are interested.
Okay, so doing it like we have done before in council chambers?
Yes.
Okay. Do we need to put that as an agenda item?
I'd be happy to bring that up under City Manager Information.
Okay, and then, do we need to take action to say we want to notice it so we can all come?
I think what I would probably do under City Manager Information is just get a head count. And if we have four or more interested, we'll advertise it as a City Council meeting. If not, we can go ahead and register and anyone who is interested can attend.
Okay. Does that sound good, Lindsay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Yes, she needs to repeat what he's requesting. Sorry, I didn't hear everything. Yes, and Lindsay, you can correct me if I'm misstating this. The MRSC is doing a webinar on the Public Meetings Act, so digging a little deeper into the presentation that we had tonight. Their presentations tend to be very well-done. And are helpful and informative. And what Lindsay's requesting is that we have it open to everyone, that we notice it so we can all come if four are available, and that we would have it here and show it on the screen.
And often, they have case law updates.
Yes. Okay, so just to... Keep trying out my microphone, sorry. A quick thing, because... So we have a large group here from Washington State University, and we will introduce them shortly. I would like to recommend moving that presentation up immediately following the consent agenda, which would be next. Is there any opposition to that? Great, then we will do that. All right, so I will read the consent agenda. The City Council Minutes of January 21, 2020. Expenditure report from January 11, 2020 to January 24, 2020, an amount of $3,664,681.70. Marine Drive Channel Bridge Improvement Project, final acceptance. And the LaRitza Boulevard Overlay Project, final acceptance. Is there anything that anyone would like to pull from the consent agenda? Or are there any just quick questions?
Is it changed, some corrections in the minutes?
Yes.
Underneath Executive Session, it says states potential conflict of interest with Lower Ella. It's supposed to be James Town?
Yes.
So I'm trying. And also underneath Open Sessions, my name is down twice, as if I have a twin sitting in here.
Okay.
I think that was...
Okay.
Yep.
So we can change item on the consent agenda, City Council Minutes of January 21, 2020, as amended?
I move the consent agenda as read and amended.
Second.
All of those in favor of the motion to uproot the consent agenda as read? Please say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. All right, so now we come to the exciting part of our meeting, the presentation from Washington State University's staff. And a couple of us had an opportunity to meet with them today. So I'm excited to hear what you have. And Nathan can do a little more in the way of introduction. Thank you.
Madam Mayor and Council, I'm really pleased to introduce... Madam Mayor and Council, I'm pleased to introduce to you Jolie Cates, as well as Steve Austin, both of which are professors at the Landscape Architecture School at Washington State University. They're accompanied by 17 students from Washington State University. We're extremely privileged to have all of these students here in Port Angeles, spending an entire week investing and learning more about Port Angeles and community, as well as taking on a number of projects that will greatly benefit the city of Port Angeles and some of the interests that we have in the community that need to be resolved, some challenges that we're going through. And ultimately, these students are taking on individual projects that should be a great opportunity for them to learn more about the community and share with community members what they learned from those experiences. So with that, we'll turn it over to Washington State University students.
Hello, thank you for that introduction. Well, let me go past this slide here. We are the senior class. And we are here for two classes, actually. Our design studio and our principles of planning class. Tonight, we will be talking about our principles of planning class and what we're doing for that. Within that, we're focusing on building a corridor and recalling in our laboratory, because it has a lot of examples of the things that we can look at. And we're going to be sharing our observations, challenges around it, and then what opportunities they provide.
So what is landscape architecture? Landscape architecture combines art, ecology, engineering, and community engagement to create outdoor meaningful spaces. This can include gardens, parks, closets, trails, greenways, and ecological restoration projects, and many more.
Hello, so we just wanted to re-highlight the area of interest that we are going to be researching and looking into, which is Lincoln Street, all the way from, I believe it's 14th Street to Second Street, in the highlighted in purple area.
So, excuse me. So what have we done prior to coming to the city of Port Angeles? We looked at the comprehensive plan and studied it, gathered information. And within our 24 hours, we have taken computer sites, gone to the waterfront, just taken everything in. And today, we have a city tour in Lincoln Corridor, looking at everything else off. So we spent time from Eighth Street walking down to the waterfront on Lincoln. One of the first things we noticed is that it appears to be too fast. It's 30 miles per hour, which seems to alienate pedestrian use, discourages biking, it can be dangerous amongst many other things. We've got a video to showcase an example. The next thing we noticed is that it's too loud. Unfortunately, we don't have speakers to showcase that, but you'll have to take our word for it. We noticed that it was 70 to 85 decibels. 80 decibels can be considered damaging to hearing after a sustained amount of time. It's generally unpleasant to be around. It discourages non-automobile use, as well as biking and just general outdoor use. That's our professor measuring the decibels right there. You can see it coming up on this phone, like reaching and topping out 80 to 85 decibels as he's measuring it. And something you can do to mitigate that is either reducing traffic or not allowing trucks through that route. The last thing we noticed was what we would call too hard. And in this case, it means non-permeable surfaces. With that, that means that floods are more common. The water doesn't infiltrate and regenerate the offerers that are naturally occurring, as well as eventually contaminates and floods into the sand. So here's a good example of the oil that ultimately, you know... Continuing on, highlighting some of the other challenges that we saw. We saw a lot of disconnection, disconnection between commercial and residential areas. And disconnection between vital areas such as a Safeway, being hard for residents to get to. And we saw a lot of bleakness of just asphalt, concrete, wear and paint and bad on the buildings.
We also saw that a lot of these spaces were inefficient. The roads seem to be really big and so are the sidewalks, but are rarely walked on. And the roads are the size of two lanes, but there are only one lanes, so cars will go faster, as well as a lot of areas where there's lots of potholes. As well as safety and accessibility, those crosswalks that are pretty damaged. Someone in a wheelchair or someone who needs ADA access is not going to be able to go along that corridor. As well as there are RVs that look to be inhabited in the building parking lots.
Hello, everybody. It's quite intimidating to be here. So this is the part that I think we can all get together and sort of get excited about, and it's opportunities for the future. So our class has kind of boiled down a couple of elements that we feel could be something that you guys pointed out to us, you want to see more of. So transportation, environment protection, form-based code, public space, our laboratory, which is our site technically, and then density. So further looking into that, one of the opportunities is transportation. We see a lot of opportunity for bikes, a different type of transit system, and just overall community integration. Moving further than that, we have a lot of things like environment protections, which is a major aspect that the Port Angeles community seems to want to protect. Here are some options that could be inspired from the city design. Again, this is another environmental protection opportunity. Transforming what a hardscape land site can look like for, say, a Safeway, a hole, any kind of strip hall. There is a way to make it more ecological than what it is. Again, this is a further explanation of that. And then, moving forward, we have form-based code. So the top image of this is kind of just sort of show what we sort of see in the city limits today. And then below is something that could be possibly implemented throughout the design process. Again, one of the things that we are going to be doing is bringing our guys' code, looking more in-depth into that to see what we can and cannot do here, or what things should be changed or should not be changed. Again, public spaces is probably the number-one opportunity I think everybody in this town wants to focus on. Bringing together green spaces where people can come together, enjoy the town that they live in, and bask in the glory. Again, public spaces are opportunities. So this is another rendering of what potential the city could have. Moving forward, one of the other things was increased house density. The idea of multi-use buildings stacking on top of, let's say, commercial spaces will not only bring people closer to their jobs, but also enable people to not have to rely on a vehicle so much. Moving forward from that, so residential opportunities. You see a lot of opportunity here as well for new development of some kind. It doesn't necessarily have to be as concrete as I'm saying right now, but these are just all examples of things that could exist. And so again, we want to go from the Lincoln Street... Sorry, we want to take the Lincoln Street Laboratory and add the Sea to Sky Corridor. This is the perfect site for showcasing all the abilities that sites offer. And that's our presentation. Steve would like to gather the class of the beginning for a class photo, if you guys...
Answer questions?
If you also have any questions, we are open for those too. Thank you. My neighbors and tourists will be here all week.
Is it possible to... We have, you have emailed a copy of the presentation to city staff, right?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any questions from the council? Electrician?
Yeah, I have a question. When you say reduce traffic, do you mean reduce traffic speed?
I think essentially, that's what you mean.
Both traffic and volume, both speed and volume, excuse me. As well as encouraging multiple forms of transit, whether it's pedestrian use, bike use, public transport, as well as individually-owned automobiles.
Okay. So can I ask one more question?
Sure.
Just for you guys' sake, put thoughts in my mind or something. What are the mechanisms for, that's being taught, to reduce volume?
Well, if you... Can I take that? So we've been doing a lot of case studying for BRT, which is Bus Rapid Transit, which has actually been known to connect cities together on even larger scale out here on the Olympic Peninsula. Essentially, you have Highway 101 that takes you down to Morgambol, and then Silverdale, and then Breverden, and then all the way to Seattle you go. Utilizing a bus transit system is one of the bare-bones foundational ideas that we could implement to connect this city with SWIM, Forbes, the entire Olympic Peninsula. And it could be something that helps people live further away from Port Angeles and still be able to go to their job in Port Angeles. That's what I think.
Okay, I was thinking more just along Lincoln Street.
Decreasing street width also, and putting more pedestrian activities. That just makes people subconsciously, like, drive slower, seeing more people on the street around them, and reducing two-lane roads down to one lane. Specifically, in the case of Lincoln Street, you have this kind of awkward width, where it's neither two lanes nor four. It's kind of in-between. And there could be a possibility for changing the infrastructure so that you have a bike lane as well.
Just for your future research, clountransit.net is the website for our transit system. And we do have a couple of routes that serve areas in the way that you are talking about. So that would be a good thing for you to look at. There's, inside the city, the routes may not be super-efficient, but there are some intercity routes that are pretty useful. So that might be good for you to check out. Any other questions from the council? All right, well, we know...
Yeah, sorry.
You do, okay, go ahead.
You know, you talk about the Lincoln Street Corridor. What, how do you see the influence? You know, one of the really fundamental features of Port Angeles is we have a ferry system that connects the United States to Canada through blackball transit. How do you see that interacting with Lincoln Street? Is there anything that came up that...
How does it interact? I think that it's going to be just a really long continuation that is going to take people to blackball ferry. We see a lot of the new development going on right now. There's already infrastructure for parking. There's always opportunities there to expand on.
I'd like to add, we talked about signage.
Can you use the microphone just so we can hear you? Thank you.
We talked about signage on Lincoln Street and maybe the lack of signage pertaining to tourism. I did notice that the ferry sign was closer to the water. But if you were, you know, up higher, you don't really see the ferry sign. So that was one thing.
Are you asking in terms of the volume of the traffic leaving a ferry and heading to Lincoln after it being decreased in width or having new things added to the street?
That's part of it. You know, I just think it represents somewhat of a challenge, because, you know, the ferry wants a certain amount... Like, you talk about like empty parking lots and empty vacant lots. Ferry wants a certain amount of parking spots within close enough proximity, because some people, that's how they use the ferry. But then it's also providing huge volume of cars that drive off the ferry to our community. So it's kind of this weird, it pulls on both directions, it seems like.
Yeah, hopefully, there'd be some sort of intelligent consolidation of parking spaces, rather than spaced-out random parking spaces and maybe not properly-designed parking spaces. And then people being willing to choose that when they drive their car off the ferry, that certain main roads now look different and they have to adjust their driving patterns slightly.
That's a great point. Do you have any, like, study or information on, like, maybe other cities that have adopted maybe micro-transportation within city limits to offset any of this?
That's something that we're actually going to be still looking further into. There are plenty of case studies around the world. It's kind of research.
Great, any other comments?
I just want to emphasize again that clountransit... We recently enacted a comprehensive plan that's available on the clountransit homepage. And I think it's some excellent planning document. And of course, your input into it would be great, although we did just go through that process. I also wanted to ask if Lincoln Street should be Highway 101. If so, why? And if not, why not?
I'm not really quite sure about that one.
Maybe that's something that can be a part of your ongoing work, is it a question to be asking yourself?
It'll be about, it'll be about the process.
Yeah. All right. Well, thank you all very much. Enjoy the rest of your time here. Hopefully, it will not snow anymore. Just saying that out loud is probably going to jinx you. So hope you brought lots of layers and appropriate shoes. Thank you very much. Have a good night. All right. I am going to recommend, because the agenda is fairly light, that we don't schedule a break at this point. But if we get to a point where it's been a while, I will put one in. So let's move on to G1. We'll get done in just a minute. All right. So, item G1. So item G1 is Authorization of the Tax Credit Supporting Affordable Housing. And we will be doing a second reading. Nathan, do you want to take that?
Madam Mayor and Council, this is the second reading of an ordinance that actually improves House Bill 1406 and the associated sales tax credit. We did make a more detailed presentation at your January 21 meeting and council did conduct the first reading at that time. Again, we do feel that this bill, or sorry, this ordinance will improve the contributions the city is able to make relative to our housing crisis as well as complement Proposition 1, which was recently passed by the local voters, in making sure that we're doing all we can to facilitate the success of new housing development. It's probably important to share that we will be needing additional discussions on this after council passes this ordinance. It's going to be important to come back and talk about how we can coordinate with other agencies, but also coordinate with other jurisdictions within Clownt County. I know there's a desire for further discussion on that in March of this year. And ideally, we'll be bringing it back in the next couple of council meetings to have more of a discussion about strategy and approach. With that, I would offer Director Breckie, Director Carazosa, or Attorney Blor to provide additional comments.
You're good? Okay. Excellent. Okay, well, let me read the ordinance and go from there. An ordinance of the City of Port Angeles imposing the local sales and use tax authorized under laws of 2019, Chapter 338, House Bill 1406, to be used for the affordable housing and provided, providing for other matters properly relating thereto.
I move that we adopt the ordinance. Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the table and a second to adopt the ordinance. And Mike, you may speak to it first since you made the motion.
I really appreciate what Nathan said about those future conversations about strategy. I think this has been a lot of work. And I really appreciate our council agreeing to do that work and move forward with, you know, this focus on housing. I think that we should note, it would not be possible without our state representatives, Mike Chapman and Steve Theringer, who are sponsors for the bill when it went through the legislature. So I appreciate their work on housing, on affordability. And I appreciate that the county has continued on and taken this mantle. And I really hope that we do find a good way to coordinate the funds so that we can use them in the most effective manner. And I just want to warn council that this might be something where we have to get outside of our comfort zone with how we spend this money. You know, when you do have coordination with other jurisdictions, you know, you give up some amount of control. And I think that we should be open to having those conversations. I do think that those will be, you know, like I said, in some ways challenging. But I look forward to them. And so I'm happy that we are going to adopt this ordinance.
Thank you. Brendan?
I'm also happy that we're adopting the ordinance, this ordinance. It was by the will of the people. They decided they wanted it, so it happened. During the AWC conference, there was a lot of conversations about different strategies in using this money and how, and how it could be used. So I'm looking forward to those discussions later on this year.
Right, I do just want to say, I think, good work to council and staff because there were a lot of people in the room at the AWC conference on the conversation, in the room for the conversation about housing who were shocked that we had already adopted this and had a successful ballot measure. So, so good for us for being proactive and seizing the opportunity that is here. Are there any more questions or comments? All right, seeing none. All those in favor of adopting the ordinance as read, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, now we move on to H1, which is page H1 in your packet. That is the resolution to adopt the Clownt County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan. And Chief Dubuque, are you going to take that for us?
I am, thank you. So, Madam Council, if you remember from our last meeting, we gave you a very brief overview of the Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan, how it was drafted, how it was done, how it was put together, and why. And just to recap that, it's a plan that's been in existence for decades. It's updated regularly. The last plan was updated in 2010. The county started working on this last update at the end of 2018 and throughout 2019. The plan was submitted to the State Department of Emergency Management and also to FEMA. And it has been approved by both of them and is now ready to be adopted by resolution by all of the stakeholders in the plan. And the intent of having the Hazard Mitigation Plan is that it's a federal requirement to have a plan in place so that if federal mitigation funding becomes available at any time during the life of the plan, the plan can be used then to direct that federal mitigation money. The plan is a living plan. If in fact, for some reason, federal mitigation funding came up because we have a plan, we would be eligible to apply for that funding. We don't need to use that funding in any particular order for any of the projects that are listed in the plan. We could even use funding for projects that are not listed in the plan. If that was the case, it's just the requirement that we have a plan. So you, we're all directed to the annex that is specific to the city, which is 38 pages long out of a 411-page plan. And then what also came up, excuse me, during the last meeting was a question really about where the Hazard Mitigation Plan falls within the overall emergency management cycle. So in front of each of you on the dais, I gave a very brief overview of the emergency management cycle. This is not intended to provide training on that. We're going to do that later. But just very briefly, there are basically four parts of the emergency management cycle. There's the response phase, which is what we do basically every day. We respond to emergencies in the city. If the emergency gets large enough that it requires oversight, we'll open up the Emergency Operations Center at the Fire Department. If the emergency gets large enough that the city requires resources, then the county will open up their Emergency Operations Center. We request resources through the county. If it gets larger than that, the county requests resources through the state. If it gets larger than that, the state requests resources from the feds. So it goes all the way up to the federal government. And the different stages based on the size of the emergency, those resources are released. Once the emergency has been handled, we go into recovery phase. The recovery phase is basically dependent again on the size of the emergency. If it was at the federal level, then the federal government will open up money. If it's not, then state or local resources are required to recover. We move out of the recovery phase into the mitigation phase. That's where we try to prevent these things from happening. That's what this plan is intended to do, to identify things that can be addressed ahead of time so that we can mitigate them before they become a problem. And then once we move out of any kind of a mitigation phase, we're almost always in the planning phase. Planning phase is where we're developing the plans that we use to respond to these emergencies. I recognize, there are a lot of acronyms on this page. And two of the acronyms are SEP and COUP. SEP stands for Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan. COUP stands for the Continuity of Operations Plan. Those are the two plans that we use when we respond to emergencies. We are currently in a rewrite phase of both of those plans. And we will be providing plenty of opportunity for input during those rewrites during the year. So hopefully that clears things up. What you have before you now is the resolution that adopts the Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan for the county.
Thank you very much. All right, I will start reading the resolution. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Port Angeles, Washington, adopting the Clownt County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan Update. All right. I entertain a motion or questions, comments?
I have a question. Is it possible to include the flow chart in the mitigation plan somewhere? For anything?
I'm sorry.
Is it possible to include a flow chart that you presented to us, like as an appendices or the beginning of the Hazard Mitigation Plan? And the reason I'm asking, and I really appreciate this overview is because when you look at the plan alone, you just, if you pull it off and you're looking at it as somebody in the public, they might not understand how the Hazard Mitigation Plan fits in the emergency management cycle. And if you have a visual that kind of shows where that plan fits, it might be more helpful for the public who doesn't live, and like, you live this every day along with Brian, you know, in your guys' jobs. This is, you live and breathe it. But somebody in the public might not quite grasp that right away as evident at the last meeting. I didn't. So I was just wondering if there's any possibility to include the flow chart in with the Hazard Mitigation Plan somewhere?
I think we can absolutely do that. The county is definitely planning, even though it's just been adopted, is definitely planning going to go into a, I can't remember what they call it, but another kind of rewrite, an update of the plan during 2020. And they're going to be having a number of public meetings in order to do that. And I can absolutely bring forward this idea to add into the plan.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
All right. Any other comments or questions?
Just one quick question. When does this go into effect? Like, what's the barrier to activate the, this hazard plan here?
The plan would be put in effect if the federal government put out mitigation dollars, which they don't always do. They can go years without doing that. And that's based on the federal budget. I don't know what it is that triggers that. But what will happen is we'll get notification from the state. And the state will basically say, hey, it's essentially like a grant. The state will come out and say, the federal government has an opportunity for mitigation dollars. They'll put out what the parameters are. And then folks who have a plan like we do then are eligible to apply for those dollars. I, the last time I can remember that happening, it's been over two years. So there's no real guarantee that it'll happen.
Right here.
All right. Questions, comments?
I move that we approve the attached resolution adopting the Clownt County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan.
I'll second it.
Any further questions or discussion? All right, all of those in favor of adopting the resolution, which is adopting the Clownt County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan Update, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All motion passes, you have.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
If I could make a motion to go to a break for five minutes?
Sure, we could do a five-minute break. And then we will come back and speak to, and take up item I2, appoint the council ad hoc committees. So we will reconvene according to that clock at, if I can do my math, 6:54.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. The next order of business, as I stated, is to appoint ad hoc committees or a committee or committees. Probably a committee would work to review applications and make recommendations for the Planning Commission and Lodging Tax. Nathan, do you want to address that quickly?
Madam Mayor and Council, this is an item that we have done in the past. We've had a three council member subcommittee who works on getting to know and reviewing applications for Lodging Tax Committee applicants as well as Planning Commission applicants. So tonight, we're looking for three council volunteers to be part of that ad hoc committee. It'll help us move forward those applications for vacant positions on both of those boards and committees. I would say it's consistent with the Port Angeles Municipal Code, the approach that's being requested tonight. And then finally, I would just add something that we did not incorporate in the memorandum. It's just, we might recommend, at council's privilege obviously, that you might go for a two-year term for that ad hoc committee, knowing that time will go by fast and it might be valuable to have it for two years with a reconsideration after the next election following that time. Just an additional add-on to the memorandum. And with that, we're recommending council appoint an ad hoc committee.
Thank you. Can I ask a quick clarifying question? Are there, is there a need to meet currently? Or is it something that would just be, let's appoint them so they're ready to go when that happens?
We, I do believe we have a number of vacancies, particularly on the Planning Commission. And so the need will be fairly urgent to start beginning to look at appointments.
Okay.
And so probably a matter of weeks away, if not sooner.
Okay. Before I ask for any volunteers, are there any questions?
Yeah, when will this, is there a certain time this will take place?
The committee meets basically as they coordinate among the three council members. There is no strict timeframe. It's just a convenience approach between the three that are selected.
Any other questions? Do I have three nominee, nominee, three people who would like to nominate themselves, or volunteer rather, or more?
I'd like to help with the planning.
Okay. So you would like to request doing two separate, an ad hoc committee for Planning Commission and an ad hoc committee for Lodging Tax as a separate group, as separate groups?
Well, I didn't realize that until we were discussing that. That is what we did in the previous two years.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. So, so we can do that. That might make it easier for people because there'd be a little less time committed. Okay, so let's start with Planning Commission. Are there three council members who would be interested in being in an ad hoc subcommittee for Planning Commission?
I'd be interested.
Okay, so that's Councilmember Suggs, Deputy Mayor Carr, and Councilmember Meyer. Oh, wait, and...
I'll take this one off.
Okay, and also Councilmember Sherman Warren for Planning Commission.
Yes, I'm sure.
So that's four. Is there anyone who would be interested in switching their interest to Lodging Tax?
I'm in. I've been switched, Kate.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Carr. So it still leaves us with four for Planning Commission and one for Lodging Tax. All right. Yeah, because Councilmember Suggs, Councilmember Meyer. Oh, no, you removed yourself. Okay, sorry, tracking. Okay, so we have three for Planning Commission. Councilmember Sherman Warren, Councilmember Meyer, and Councilmember Suggs. And then we have one so far for Lodging Tax.
I can do Lodging Tax.
And one more, Councilmember French, Deputy Mayor Carr, and would you like to do Lodging Tax?
I guess so, thank you.
Thank you. And Councilmember McCon. Do we need to vote on those, or can we just? Okay, so...
Will you just make the motion since you haven't written in front of you?
Yes. We can, can I make a motion? All right, so I move to appoint Councilmember, let me just read it again. Councilmember Suggs, Councilmember Sherman Warren, and Councilmember Meyer to a subcommittee, an ad hoc subcommittee, to appoint people to, or review appointments for Planning Commission. And in addition to that, appoint a subcommittee for the same purpose for the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, which is fulfilled.
Let's do two separate motions.
Okay. We'll stick with the first motion without the Lodging Tax. Is that okay?
And for two years?
And the appointment, I'm just going to start over.
Okay.
Sorry. Who knows, one of those takes a long time. All right. So I move that we appoint an ad hoc subcommittee consisting of Councilmember Sherman Warren, Councilmember Suggs, and Councilmember Meyer to review appointments for the Planning Commission and serve... commission and serve for a period of two years.
Second.
All right. Any discussion, questions? All of us in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Let's try for the next one. I move that we appoint council member French, council member McCon, and deputy mayor Carr to an ad hoc, ad hoc subcommittee to review appointments for the lodging tax advisory committee for a period of two years.
Second.
Right, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, that was a little more complicated than I needed it to be.
Madam Mayor, if I can just add to that?
Yes.
I just want to make sure that, that the audience as well as council understands that these are recommending committees, they are not decision-making committees, so they make a recommendation to the full city council. And as we receive those recommendations, we typically put them on the city council consent agenda for approval.
Thank you for the clarification. I tried to make sure I wasn't indicating authority to appoint in my motion, but probably good for the clarification. Thank you. All right. Now we have council reports. Let's start with council member Sherman Warren, since you were on the phone.
All right, thank you. So I, I just wanted to clarify, I, in suggesting that we attend the Open Public Meetings Act primer that MRSC is putting on on February 12th from eleven to noon, I'm not suggesting that Attorney Moore and Assistant Attorney Cowgill's presentations are not a great introduction and coverage of this. I think that and Public Records Act and some other areas are important enough that we hear them from multiple perspectives and hear them over and over again. So I hope other council members are able to attend on February 12th from eleven to noon and share that sentiment. So it's in no way saying we're not getting adequate training from our legal departments. I'm not able to attend the federal center that the public college is opening tomorrow as I'm out of town, but I hope other council members are and have time at the public college and support that. I had a call last week with other local elected officials from around the state and Washington Low Income Housing Alliance. And we were specifically discussing the multi-tenant tax exemption and some bills or one bill that's going forward and that, what changes should be made in the state legislature. The Washington Low Income Housing Alliance has every other Friday calls during legislative session and they just like to sign up publicly on their website for that. We as a group of local elected officials along with some of the subs active in the lobbying process, deciding to continue to meet. If you're interested in joining in on those calls, we'd let you know. And that's an invitation for council members as well as staff, if you're interested, just let me know. I did decide at this time not to sign on to the accessory zoning unit bill, even though I think it's the right direction. We've moved in that direction somewhat as far as that bill would go. But really, I think my only objection is the short-term rental provision that is not yet there and need to clarify that they're not just going to increase more ADUs for short-term rentals, it's actually going to go to residential housing, which is the intent in that bill. There's a plan to amend it, but it's not yet there. Let's see, I sat in on the first hour of the technical advisory committee for the Peninsula Regional Transportation Planning Organization or the PRTPO. I'm just trying to make sure that I inform myself with what tax up to and understand that. My favorite part was the discussion about how important it is for elected officials to understand the grant management obligations of accepting federal funds. Felt like I was exploring the world for that one. Also, the Straight Business Recovery Network, during group met last week, I served on that as well. And the Straight Business Recovery Network will be hosting the Puget Sound Partnership Leadership Council on June ninth over in Jamestown. And that joint meeting is part of a process of increasing grassroots involvement in the Puget Sound partnership process. So I hope that we'll be able to develop a good meeting plan for that. And if other people are interested, please let me know about the details there. Finally, last item is the Association of Washington City's Legislative Priorities Committee is a, I guess it's a two-year term, so I've been on it for the last two years. I plan to get on again if I'm able to. But I want to encourage other council members to as well. The Legislative Priorities Committee forms several subcommittees. Those subcommittees tackle different subject areas and then put those items forward with the entire priorities committee to produce a recommended legislative priorities, which is then approved by the EWC board. So being on the Legislative Priorities Committee is being in the room, helping shape EWC's agenda. And, you know, it'll start, it's a process that'll start in the summer and then kind of move into the early fall. And then that shapes the legislative agenda for the 2021 legislative session. So because there's several subcommittees, I think it'd be valuable if several of us are involved, so especially for more folks in that, in EWC staff. And hopefully decide if they're awesome. So if that's something that sounds good, I'd be happy to give more information about it. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. I can't remember which way we went last time, so we'll start with council member Suggs.
My update is I was able to meet with Brian, had a great tour of the police department, PennCom, very impressed with his, his staff and, you know, they, they all, very impressed. I mean, it's good to see when staff get along with each other, you know, they enjoy going to work, they work hard. And I really appreciate the effort that he has, that Brian has gone through to efficiently run the police department and partner with PennCom and everything that they do and the tasks that they carry out. It's amazing. It's not easy. And I, I really appreciate the tour. I think we spent about three hours together. So we had some really good discussions and stuff. And tomorrow I do get to meet with Steve Burke and get to tour the Shore Memorial Pool construction because I will be on that board. So that, that's about what I've done. Thank you.
Council member French.
Okay, so the fun thing that I did was I attended the community awards gala up on by the Chamber of Commerce, got to see a lot of great community members get recognized and awarded, had a lot of fun. I got to sit next to the superintendent, which was great because I got to bend his ear on a whole bunch of things. Yesterday, our Chamber of Commerce, because we rescheduled because of the snow, had our board retreat and then it snowed again. But we, we spent a good, you know, six hours at least discussing the future of the Chamber of Commerce, what we're planning to do this next year. We had to have an unfortunate, difficult conversation about a tent because of course the tent collapsed that the Jamestown Clallum Tribe loaned us for the Winter Ice Village. We want to make it right to them and so we discussed how, how we could do that. And, you know, unfortunately, the insurance coverage was a little short of the full purchase price of new tent. A mistake we won't make again. But we had a really great retreat. Last year, the Chamber of Commerce really was trying to focus on not taking on a whole bunch of new projects and lines of business and, and events because we'd already done so much expansion in the last few years. We just wanted to focus on doing what we were doing better, like the Winter Ice Village. And this year, I think we're going to have some really exciting things about the Chamber of Commerce, so I'm excited for that. And then one thing I did come across, I think it was in an AWC podcast, but I can't remember where, was the, the city of Bellingham, they have a webpage for it, but in their code they have a infill housing toolkit that is a really cool resource. So if other council members wanted to just see what other cities are doing around these kind of community development issues on how do we, you know, get underutilized land, you know, to do new and interesting housing developments, to get more density, to get, you know, the kind of how, the kind of variety in housing types. That's what One City is doing. It's a really cool thing. It, it basically gives seven traditional housing forms and it kind of, if you're going to follow this form, you're going to sail through the permit process. So if you're going to be able to look at that, that's their infill housing toolkit from the city of Bellingham. And then today I went to a homelessness task force meeting and we actually got a presentation from Rachel Myers, Executive Director of the Washington Low Income Housing Alliance, and talking about their legislative priorities, what they're seeing coming forward in the new, in the, in the session. And so we had a good back and forth where, you know, a lot of the things that were priorities for them were of specific interest to the members of the housing task force. We actually had an interesting discussion about the makeup of the task force in our bylaws. We have city representation from the three cities that are in Clallum County, Squim, Forks, and Port Angeles, but we do a rotation. So right now, the city of Port Angeles has pointed me to that task force. But really, the bylaws say that we should have all three cities represented. And I can't really accurately represent the interests of the city of Squim or the city of Forks. And so it was very interesting thinking of the Clallum Transit discussion that we'd had. And so we, you know, I think that one of the, it, it's really important to have public policymakers on these task forces so they can see what's going on, on the ground, so that they can hopefully take ideas that are happening from these nonprofits and agencies that are dealing with homelessness and use that information when they're making policy on the city level. So we'll see if that goes anywhere or not, but we might be able to get, you know, more cities participating in, you know, this, this countywide conversation we're having on homelessness, I think is only good. And I think that's it.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Carr?
Do you want to ask a question?
I have a question for you, Mike. In their bylaws, is there anything where they reach out to the tribes to ask a tribal member to participate?
So we have a slot for tribal representation. And I think that it's one of those where it was similar to the cities where, of I think, four different tribes were listed in our bylaws and any of those tribal, tribal governments wanted to send a representative, they would fill the seat. And right now it's vacant. And it has been for a little while. So I, one of the things we were pressing them is, you know, maybe not enough to just do a public notice and say, hey, anybody who wants to apply, maybe we need to do some outreach. And so I think our, we have an outreach committee that usually does talk about outreach to homeless people, but I think they're going to take that on and be proactive and go to tribal governments and ask. Because I, we would love, I think that that's, one of the things that came out of the homelessness task force data last year was that, you know, tribal members are disproportionately affected by homelessness. And so that is a, there is a, you know, racial fairness, justice kind of issue around homelessness that needs to be addressed in capital. So we absolutely need representation and I think that this task force hopefully will now be a little more proactive in asking for that representation.
Okay, great, that'd be good.
If you want to help, let me know.
Sure.
Really quick, actually, sorry. I'm sorry, Navara. One of the things that actually came out of our Chamber of Commerce board retreat is we got a presentation from, I believe his name's Kyle Johnson, the, from the Jamestown EDA Economic Development Agency. And, you know, he, he described a lot of what the exciting things were happening at Jamestown. And one of the things he mentioned for their, for 2020, one of their focus areas will be housing. And so I think that, you know, everyone recognizes that this is an issue that we, that we need to be moving on. And so I think that, that, that was something I brought up at those task forces, that, you know, we have interests aligned. I think that it's essential to get input from not just Jamestown, but all of our tribes about these issues.
Right, they just got done doing a housing study that includes workforce housing and also tribal housing issues and transitional housing issues. So yeah, they have a, they just got done completing their study.
All right. Deputy Mayor Carr?
Well, one of the things that I did for the past couple of weeks is I attended an event put on by the Racial Justice Collective and Peninsula College for their Martin Luther King Junior Day Week of Activities. And it was a showing of the documentary Thirteenth, which is about incarceration in America. And it was, I highly recommend the documentary. It's quite thought-provoking and horrifying, especially when it looks at the history of incarceration and the way that it's been used as a tool to oppress racial minorities. And afterwards, there was a presentation by, or a panel of our sheriff and then a representative who works at Clallum Bay Correctional Facility. And so being able to talk with them and hear what is actually happening in our jail system and at the prison and what, what people are doing in this community. And I thought it was a really important way of hearing about members of our community who are incarcerated, specifically in talking with the representative from Clallum Bay, getting to hear about his programs and what folks are doing on the inside to, in educational opportunities and in job skills. And some of their art was for sale and really being able to build that connection as a representative of Port Angeles. And, you know, we, it goes to take seriously that I represent all, all people, including people who are incarcerated, and it was a really good reminder of that.
Thank you. Council member McCon?
This is a busy week, two weeks. Attended my first Solid Waste Advisory Committee meeting, otherwise known as SWAC. They're in the middle of going over the entire plan. I came in on the second meeting of that, I believe, and we're going to continue that on the next meeting. So I have a lot to read before my next meeting, so that was one meeting I attended. Then I also attended the Gala Committee or the Awards Dinner. That was my first time to go, I believe that was the third one. I was glad to see they acknowledged former council member Jim Moran. He was given a legacy award and that was accepted by his wife and that was a really cool thing to see. Business of the Year was Black Ball Ferry was given a legacy award. Last week, a group of us attended Olympia's Action Days, which was very exciting for me. I've never been to Olympia, it was my first time to go in the Capitol. I had a chance to sit with a group of us with Representative Chapman, Theringer, and also Senator Vandeweghe. And I also kind of heard through the grapevine that the governor approached one of our people in our group, I'm not sure if that's true or not. But that was pretty cool to hear, the governor instantly approached, I believe, Cory and got a chance to speak to him. And then before leaving the cap, and I do believe that all three of the meetings with the representatives and the center went very well. I just walked away feeling good about those. We presented them our legislative priorities for 2020 and they all seemed to be accepted well. Before leaving Olympia, we got a great opportunity to meet with some of the staff at City of Olympia, City Hall, beautiful building. Had some great conversation with them about issues we have and they have, and it's a great time to, anytime you have an opportunity to, to visit with another city, it's, you don't want to miss that chance. So it's a great time to brainstorm and talk about current issues each of us had. Thank God for the Super Bowl, get my mind off of all of this stuff on Sunday. But I did have a meeting with Norma Turner on Sunday as well, went over the Boys and Girls Club, how that's going. Going to be meeting with her and having a tour of Squim and Port Angeles, I believe, on the 12th of February. And then I also have a meeting to go to on the 25th, the William Shore Pool. So I contacted Steve Burke, he's going to meet with me on the 14th and try to get me up to speed on Valentine's Day. And then after that, my wife and I are out of here and heading to Quinell Lodge, so thank you.
Thank you. Council member Mayor?
Yes, right off the top, I also attended the Action Days. The city did a wonderful job advocating for our legislative priorities. Mayor Dexter in particular led with excellence, really championing our legislative priorities. Allison Brecky laid out the economic potential envisioned for our waterfront through our reps, which was excellent. We also got to meet with the State Department of Archaeology, which goes to the fact that a lot of what we did on the Action Days was talking to our representatives and really nurturing the relationships that our staff and our legislator and our, our council has as. put forth over the years. Mayor, Manager West put together a really impressive team. I felt a bit like one of the Avengers heading out there to advocate for our city. As, and as a layman, you know, just seeing the good back and forth with, with our reps was excellent to see that I sounded like, you know, they had open ears and it was great. Meeting with so many other city councillors from around the region was really good. It was good and bad. You know, a lot of these other cities are facing similar problems that we're facing. That's the bad part. The good part is that we can lean on each other for knowledge and, and take what works and what doesn't work and try to come up with solutions. Quick shout out to Ruth Kendall of Longview, City Council Member. Javier Diego of University Place, also a City Council Member. Jeanne Zones from Bothell and Leslie Davis from Bremerton. All excellent City Council Members from the region. Got to speak with each one of them, it was great making connections. Port Angeles was looked upon as a leader for the SP 1406, which was great. Kate stood up and talked to everybody about that during one of the breakout sessions. A lot of interesting ideas, especially in pooling funds, community development using our CBDG funds, community block, community development block grant funds. There was a couple of House bills that I was interested in that they went over. HB 2420 shifts the management of public defenders to the state. So we, meaning that the cost of the indigenous, indigenous defense for people who have to go to court and can't defend themselves, right now, the city and the county pay for the attorneys and this House bill is trying to kick that up to the state so the state takes that burden off of our city, which makes a lot of sense. But that, this all goes to the unfunded mandates as well. HB 1938, I thought was really interesting too. It's defining affordable housing and workforce housing and it's basically one and the same. It also would allow the creation of a local infrastructure investment program. This is to shield investors from the risk in a lot of the development. It just seemed, you have to take a look at it. It seemed good. We visited the library, my family and I visited the library and I found my way into the archive section, which I think I'll be pulling a lot of information out over these next four years, because it's always good to look back in the past. And my wife picked up this book called From the Hands of a Weaver and our own council member, a council person, Snoots, Suggs, right, was in there with a hat on. It was very good. The what?
Oh, From the Hands of a Weaver.
From the Hands of a Weaver, yeah. It was a native weaving. Some citizen interactions that I'm going to be attending on Friday, February 12th. I'll be going to Jesse Webster Park, they have Food Not Bombs. You can check that out, it's a lot of living AM. I sat down with Steve Belisi and Mark Ozias with, you know, because I'm on the Columbine Transit Board. I got to meet with them, the future of Columbine Transit, it looks okay for now. Initiative 976 will affect the system to an extent that will still be determined, but I'm extremely happy and excited to be heading there to my first meeting on February 19th. I got to meet up with the President of PAPA, the Peninsula Area Public Access, Arthur Ojanaski. I got to take a stroll to the studio. Also very excited to attend my first meeting there next week as well. The Regional Transportation, the PRTPO, the Peninsula Regional Transportation Planning Organization. I'm also having a meeting to get caught up on that on the 12th as well. Charlie mentioned that we did get to go to Olympia during this excursion to the Action Days. And they're, they really took a stand for their homelessness in the community process and really Olympia's homelessness, homelessness community process should be a model for any, any problem facing the city of that magnitude. Really, they went back to their community and they just held public meetings for solutions, people just to come up and speak. It was really a great public outreach and it was excellent to see. And yeah, and you know, when, when given the opportunity, communities speak up. So that was, that was it. Thank you.
Thank you. I did a lot of the same things as other people. I was at the Community Awards Gala and I do really enjoy going to that. I really appreciate the celebration of all the amazing things, not all of them, but many of the amazing things that are happening in our community. And it's also fun to get dressed up. And I love that it's in the burn burning, so it feels like such a good blending of Port Angeles and big city, but anyway.
In the gym.
In the gym, it's great. And welded and well-maintained. So I also went to my first Lawrence and Trust meeting, which is really interesting and I think I have a little bit of a learning curve there. So they joke that it's great committee to be on because there's no homework. And then I left saying, well, I'll follow up on, and I thought, I guess you have some homework. So I think there will always be homework for anything we do. I also enjoy going to the AWC. It is always nice to hear what other people are doing, how other cities are tackling issues because most of us are dealing with similar problems or challenges, rather, is a better way to say that. And I also enjoy taking the time to meet with the city of Olympia. I think we'll have some good follow-up from that. One other, just a quick note for the chamber, because I'll forget if I don't say it right now. They also had a temporary ice skating rink that they were taking down while we were there and their tent had these super big sturdy beams and I thought it might be worth the chamber checking in with them to see about it.
As Olympia?
Yeah, City of Olympia. And that is all for me, so let's go on to the City Manager Report.
Madam Mayor, Council, I do have a number of things for you this evening. As Councilmember Sherman Warren mentioned, I do want to get, gauge council interest tonight on the February 12th MRSC Open Public Meeting webinar. As Councilmember Sherman Warren mentioned, there's a lot of benefit to the MRSC training. Oftentimes, they'll talk about case law, some applications, some specific examples that might be of interest to council. So, and I recognize too, that it may be not all council members know their availability at 11:00 AM on February 12th, but that is the time. And if we do have four or more councilmen, members interested in attending, we will notice that as a public meeting on February 12th. So maybe a show of hands of those interested in attending.
Sorry, did you say it was at 11 or at 12?
From 11 to 12 on February 12th.
Okay.
I am interested, I've got to check my calendar at work and confirm that with you though, so I can't commit tonight.
Council, that's fine. So far, it does appear that we probably have at least four who at least may have interest in attending, so we'll go ahead and notice it.
What about Lindsay though?
Yeah, he's, he wants to come because he's the one asking to, so that'll make three.
I just have a conflict, otherwise I would make an effort, but I have a conflict already, so.
Not a problem. Council, I also wanted to invite council to participate in the City Wellness Challenge this month, which is a step challenge. And so if you can measure your steps during the month of February and turn them in to the Human Resources Department at the end of the month, we're doing a step challenge. It's important for healthy heart month and just want to pass that along to council.
So what's the challenge? Am I trying to beat you?
You are tracking steps for the month.
For the whole month, okay.
For the whole month of February.
There's a, there's a thing on the wall between Sherri's desk and Abby's office or past, just past Abby's office on a wall that has miles and it gives you some ideas of California, how many miles is Paris, how many, you can see. Where do you want to walk to?
My Fitbit's charging today, but that's okay.
I don't have a Fitbit or an Apple Watch or something, should I just count as I walk one?
We, we may have some pedometers available from a prior challenge if someone has ideas for us. In addition to those items, I just want to make council aware that we're really going to be ramping up the importance of the upcoming census, recognizing how valuable those statistics and information are to the city of Port Angeles, particularly knowing that we're a micro-politain statistical area. Those statistics are really meaningful. We want to get everyone in this community participating and really do quite a bit of outreach on that. So we're going to be doing that more during the month of February as well as March, as well as getting some notices out in utility bills relative to how important census is to the city of Port Angeles. And then finally, I do want to mention the Association of Washington City's City Action Days. Staff too felt that that was a very valuable opportunity. And Councilmember Sherman Warren, our AWC staff members are doing an excellent job. I think we were really surprised and impressed to see the number of bills that are on there that are really supporting some priorities that the city of Port Angeles has. If you go back to the legislative priorities for city council, I think we're going to have to continue to watch and push for a number of the housing initiatives that we'd like to see. There are, there are many that we're happily surprised with that are actually in the works right now, some of which are actually sponsored by our local legislators. We greatly appreciate that. But in addition to that, there's some that we need to follow and continue to ask questions about to make sure they don't get modified along the way and rule out the city of Port Angeles' participation. In addition to that, I would say that most of our requests were extremely well-received, particularly the Boys and Girls Club has thorough support of all three legislators. I will say there is quite a bit more work to do to achieve consistency among all legislators relative to the Port Angeles Waterfront Center. So we will be continuing to work on that. And that concludes the City Manager's Report.
Excellent. Thank you very much. So that brings us to our second public comment period. If there's anyone who would like to address the council, feel free to come to it for you. All right. Well, seeing none, we have concluded our business, so I will call this meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.